Excellent. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the pre-town meeting information session. My name is Colin Loizel. I'm the town manager. Just a little bit about the format for this evening. Tonight is an informational meeting only. There's no votes taken tonight, and there's also no debating. So I will present the warrant articles, I'll provide an explanation, and then we'll have an opportunity for questions. This is being recorded and broadcast live, so you can refer back to it. I also want to point out that if you visit the town's website, the town meeting page, which is under Town and Town Meeting, we've loaded all of the articles for this town meeting into the webpage. It includes the text from the warrant, the explanation, how the Finance Committee and Select Board voted whether to recommend or not recommend, and it also includes a video explainer for each one. So feel free to reference this at any point between now and town meeting, which again is on Tuesday, October 24th, at 7:00 PM. We will dive right in, and I will stop after every explanation and see if anyone has questions. So if you have questions, the microphones on the side should pick them up. If it sounds like maybe they didn't, I'll repeat the question so that people at home can hear it if they missed it. The first three articles are citizen petitions. The Select Board is required, under Mass. General laws, to submit to the warrant any petition that garners enough signatures by registered voters. I will read the warrant article and the explanation included in the guidebook, but we won't answer questions. Petitioners will provide their own explanation for each citizen petition at town meeting. Article one is a citizen petition regarding the limitation to real estate tax increase. To see if the town will vote to require any warrant article that will require or impose an increase to real estate taxes must be voted by ballot during a town general election and not during an annual or special town meeting vote unless a quorum exists with a minimum of 25% of Tingsborough registered voters. The town of Tingsborough does not provide explanations for citizen petitions. However, Town Council has reviewed the language of the article and believes that this article is unlawful and will not pass the legal review of the Attorney General. For those unfamiliar, every warrant article, whether it's a citizen petition or one submitted by the town, goes to the Attorney General's Municipal Bureau for review before it is enacted. So even ones that are sponsored by the town will be reviewed by the Attorney General to ensure they're lawful. The Select Board voted 5-0 not in favor, and the Finance Committee voted 4-0 not in favor. Article two is a citizen petition. Yes? Not on citizen petitions, since these were submitted by someone other than the town.
Not about the petition, about why the Select Board decided to vote on those articles. Typically, they don't vote on citizen petitions.
Correct. If a member of the Select Board wants to explain why they voted, no.
They can either do it now or at town meeting, because that's really unusual.
Yeah, the previous one we did not vote on, but once our Town Council said that this was unlawful, then we decided to make sure that the rest--
Town Council did not say that.
Again, this is not going to be a debate, though. We're just going to ask questions.
If you want to talk about it, that is the reasoning. You asked for the reasoning, that is--
Fine, but Town Council did not say that. He said the Attorney General might find it. He didn't-- Town Council, he's not the judge.
Correct. Town Council said he believes that the article is unlawful. That's correct.
Correct, thank you.
Article two, citizen petition, limitation on project approval. To see if the town will vote to require any project in excess of $1 million must be approved by ballot during a town general election and not during an annual or special town meeting unless a quorum exists with a minimum of 25% of Tingsborough registered voters. Again, the town of Tingsborough does not provide explanation for citizen petitions. However, Town Council has reviewed the language of the article and believes that this article is unlawful and will not pass the legal review of the Attorney General. The Select Board voted 5-0 not in favor, and the Finance Committee voted 4-0 not in favor. Article three, the final citizen petition, maintaining local emergency dispatch. To see if the town will vote to maintain Tingsborough's emergency dispatch local within Tingsborough and not move to Tooksbury's Regional Center, the town of Tingsborough does not provide explanations for citizen petitions. However, it is the opinion of Town Council that this article serves as a non-binding referendum, as the authority to make contract decisions lies with the Select Board, not town meeting. Both the Select Board and Finance Committee chose to not vote either way on this article. Article four is the first town-sponsored article, transfer of funds from free cash. To see if the town will vote to transfer the following amounts from free cash to the following accounts and/or for the following purpose. For those that aren't familiar, free cash is essentially the difference between the revenue that the town brings in in a fiscal year and what it's spent. So when we prepare the budget, we conservatively estimate how much revenue the town will receive, and if that revenue exceeds what we budgeted for, then that becomes free cash. And once certified by the Department of Revenue, the town is able to allocate it for purposes at town meeting. Some of these items appeared on the May Annual Town Meeting. At that time, the free cash had not been certified by the Department of Revenue, so some of these are repeats, but I'll read them and the purposes as well. $52,500 to the other post-employment benefits trust fund. The purpose is to meet long-term OPEB funding plan commitment. $200,000 to the capital account to fund the 2024 Roads Program as outlined in the fiscal year 2024 Capital Asset Management Committee Report. $60,000 to the public buildings' general fund account for fiscal year '24 to fund the abatement and demolition of the former Council on Aging Building located at 180 Lakeview Ave., having recently sustained significant water damage due to a burst pipe. $455,018 for FY24 School Department Revenue to fund Medicaid reimbursements for fiscal year '22 and '23. $200,000 to the Capital Asset Stabilization Fund, reserved for future capital asset expenditures. $100,000 to the Special Ed Stabilization Fund, which is funding unanticipated or unbudgeted costs of special education out of district tuition or transportation. And $50,000 to the FinCom Reserve Fund to provide for extraordinary or unforeseen expenditures in 2024. This article approves appropriations from the town's free cash for the purposes outlined on the previous slide. The Select Board voted 5-0 in favor, and the Finance Committee voted 4-0 in favor. Before I take questions on it, the one new item is $60,000 for the demolition of 180 Lakeview Ave., which many will know as the old Council on Aging Building. A brief history of the building. In 2015, it was vacated by the COA when the new one on Westford Road opened up. At that time, utilities to the building were turned off with the exception of electricity. Between 2015 and 2019, municipal use in the building was limited, but did include some storage by youth softball. In 2019, the Select Board authorized a lease with a private group where the group was responsible for utilities. As such, water and gas to the building were turned back on. In 2021, that lease with the private group terminated, and the town assumed control of the building again. Following the termination of the lease, utilities remained on while the town assessed next steps. The town had no municipal use for it, and when we solicited private use leases, the only one that we received was the group that we entered into a lease with in 2019. The building remains vacant except for, again, the storage of softball equipment by youth softball. In February of 2023, the building experienced freezing pipes during that very frigid early February weekend. Once it thawed, pipes burst, causing significant flood damage to the floor and the walls in the bathroom, as well as the plumbing throughout the building. Today, the building is vacant. It's not safe or ideal to be used for storage. The tiles that were damaged by the water contain asbestos, and so substantial abatement needs to take place. There's no plumbing available, and we would need to replace a good amount of the plumbing fixtures that are on the far exterior wall, which is where we experienced the pipe burst. These are just some photos of the building. A quick comment on public building considerations. The town's current inventory includes the Old Town Hall, the First Parish Meeting House, the Littlefield Library, and the Council on Aging. Upcoming additions include the new clubhouse, which has been donated to the town as a part of the Toll Brothers Project over on the Sherburne Road parcel. That building was renovated to the town's needs and to bring it up to code by Toll Brothers. Vacant buildings include the Winslow School, which in May of 2023, Town Meeting approved $1.5 million for a limited demolition and moving of the original school forward on the same parcel; the 180 Lakeview Ave. Building, former Council on Aging; and the 120 Westford Road, former rec building, which today is still used by the Rec Committee for storage. In September of 2023, the Select Board requested input from community groups regarding meeting space needs. The Board is expected to review the feedback in November. We've received so far roughly 12 or so responses from community groups, all of them essentially looking for a low-maintenance space where the same burdens that we-- or the same challenges that we experience at buildings like the First Parish and the Old Town Hall aren't the same, where they could let themselves in, where we wouldn't need a host, where the town didn't spend substantial money to renovate them or to keep them historic. So some considerations for the 180 Lakeview Ave. parcel. The Select Board has no plans to sell the parcel. That site houses a soccer field and a softball field. If Town Meeting allocated the funding to demolish the building, where the building sits would simply be paved for additional softball parking. That whole parking lot needs to be repaved. And when we spoke with the Recreation Department and Mike Knight from the softball program, their two needs for that parcel include storage, which could be accommodated with the shed on the parcel, as well as bathrooms. That site uses porta-potties, as do many of our rec sites, including Riverfront Park. However, we could explore more permanent outhouse like the ones that are at Wiccey. Those are a little bigger than what we'd look at, because they include a concession stand, and the rec department has no interest in putting a concession stand at 180 Lakeview Ave. That is my presentation on Article four. Happy to take questions. Excellent. And for those watching at home, if questions come up while you're at home, certainly feel free to email administration@tingsboroughma.gov, and we will get answers to your questions. Article five, Sewer Enterprise Fund retained earnings transfer. This is another article that appeared as Article 11 on the May 2nd, 2023 Annual Town Meeting. The Department of Revenue certifies both the town's free cash from our general fund as well as the retained earnings from the Sewer Enterprise Fund. Because the town hadn't certified its free cash, the DOI did not certify the retained earnings. So now that we're certifying free cash, we need to put this article back up. It's to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $1,25,170 from the Sewer Enterprise Fund retained earnings to the Sewer Enterprise Fund for fiscal year '24 to be expended by the Sewer Commission, as shown as Article 11 on the May 2nd, 2023 Annual Town Meeting, or take any other action relative thereto. This amount, $1,25,170, is included in the Sewer Department's approved fiscal year 2024 budget. The Select Board voted 5-0 in favor, and the Finance Committee voted 4-0 in favor. Questions on Article five? Excellent. Article six is an appropriation from the Community Preservation Committee Fund to see if the town will vote to appropriate or reserve from estimated annual revenues of the Community Preservation Fund for fiscal year 2024 the sum of $250,000 to fund the Winslow Road Footbridge Project or to take any other action relative thereto. This article would appropriate $250,000 from the Community Preservation Fund for the purposes of supplementing existing funding for the Town Center Footbridge Project, which will see the installation of a pedestrian bridge over the Flint Pond Dam between Winslow Road and Middlesex Road, an observation deck overlooking the dam, and various site improvements in the town center. The first round of funding for this project was approved by Town Meeting at May Annual, and the Community Preservation Committee met in early October to review the request. They voted 6-0 in favor. The Select Board voted 5-0 in favor, and the Finance Committee voted 4-0 in favor. Questions on Article six? Ms. Crawford?
How many members of CPC were also Finance Committee members?
I believe that there are two.
Right, correct. Does the bylaw allow for that?
The bylaw outlines the number of representatives from each committee. Finance is allowed one. Conservation Commission is allowed one. The second Finance Committee member was appointed by the Conservation Commission.
Community Preservation Committee bylaw allows for one Finance Committee member. Is that not correct?
That is not-- it allows for one designated member. The Community Preservation-- we will address Mr. Crawford's question for those that are confused in the next article. What you're referring to, Mr. Crawford, is a town bylaw that says that members of Finance Committee can only serve on Finance Committee.
No, no, no. CPC says one member from the Finance--
Correct. But the CPC Committee does not say that it limits one member. It says that the makeup of the Committee is a member of the Historic Commission, three members at large, one member of Finance, and one member of Conservation Commission.
So we have two Finance Committee members on the CPC, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I say that's a violation of bylaw, but--
And we'll go to Article seven, if there's no other questions on Article six. Article seven is a Town General Bylaw Update Regarding Appointments. To see if the town will vote to amend the town's general bylaws, Article two, entitled Finance Committee, by adding the language in bold and striking the language with a strike through, as shown below, or take any other action relative thereto. As presented in this article, as Mr. Crawford pointed out, the town's general bylaws limit the service of Finance Committee members to the Finance Committee only. Currently, there are two members of the Finance Committee that serve on other appointed and elected boards. This bylaw, if approved by Town Meeting, would change the bylaw to require that Finance Committee members are only prohibited from serving on Finance Committee and the Select Board, the School Committee, or the Board of Library Trustees, thus allowing Finance Committee members to serve on any other appointed or elected board. The rationale behind this is that those are the three boards that spend money, they have budget requests before the Finance Committee, and the Select Board felt like that was a conflict of interest. Mr. Crawford is correct that the current bylaw prohibits Finance Committee members from serving on multiple boards. There are two members who currently serve on the Finance Committee and on multiple boards. This would put the Finance Committee in compliance and prohibit only a Finance Committee member from serving on the Select Board, the School Committee, and the Board of Library Trustees at the same time as serving on the Finance Committee. Questions on Article seven?
Sure. CPC, in the last, or May, Annual Town Meeting, appropriated $800,000 for the year, okay? And they have over $2.5 million in their rainy day fund, their general fund. So certainly CPC should be on the list of acceptable people to be excluded from Finance Committee sitting on that, because they're appropriating money.
I'm not going to debate the article with you. I'm just presenting it as it is.
No, no, I'm just speaking of fact.
And that could be mentioned at Town Meeting. But tonight is for questions.
So you're saying, to make sure I'm understand, the Finance Committee, if this should pass, could be on the Planning Board, the Zoning Board, the Sewer Commission, Board of Assessors, Housing Authority, and about a dozen others, and any board the Selectmen may decide to put into place later in the future?
Correct. This article only restricts Select Board, School Committee, and Board of Library Trustees.
Not the CPC that had an appropriation of $800,000 and $2.5 million in the bank. Thank you.
Any other questions on Article seven? The Select Board voted 5-0 in favor, and the Finance Committee voted 4-0 in favor.
Sir, I do have to bring up on the Finance Committee, the two Finance Committee members that voted 4-0-0. Two of those are the ones that they benefited themselves by voting in favor of the bylaw of an article that benefited them.
Again, Ms. Crawford, this is commentary for Town Meeting. Tonight is for questions only.
But that had to be said.
Thank you. Article eight, Town General Bylaw Addition, Sealer of Weights and Measures. To see if the town will vote to amend the town's general bylaws by adding the following new Article 53, entitled Sealer of Weights and Measures Fees, or take any other action relative thereto. Tingsborough recently joined a regional sealer of weights and measures program. That's the individual responsible for testing gas pumps to make sure they're measuring gas correctly, businesses that have scales. This establishes a fee structure comparable with the other regional communities. This did not previously exist in the town bylaws, and so this article would codify this into the bylaws. Question-- the Select Board voted 5-0 in favor, and the Finance Committee voted 4-0 in favor. Questions on Article eight? Article nine, Approved Prior Year Bills. To see if the town will vote to approve payment on the following bills, which were incurred during a previous fiscal year, the year being fiscal year '23. WB Mason for $32.89. WB Mason for $14.88. TPX Communications, which provides the phone service for Town Hall, the Highway Department, and the Council on Aging. Sherburne Lumber for $154.27. And Arden Engineering, $277.50. Arden Engineering is the company that maintains the town-owned streetlights. Bills that are paid outside of the fiscal year that are generated during a different fiscal year require Town Meeting authorization. These bills would be paid out of existing funds appropriated for fiscal year '24, and so this article does not grant additional monies to any specific department budget. The Select Board voted 5-0 in favor, and the Finance Committee voted 4-0 in favor. Questions on Article nine? Excellent. With that, I'm going to turn Article 10 over to Dr. Flanagan.
If you read it.
If you want.
So I'm going to save about 20 minutes and also not read the article, but basically we're here for-- to look to approve or authorize a community to borrow an additional $4.6 million for our school construction project. So I will jump into a brief summary, a kind of a 30,000-foot view. And essentially, I think I need to answer three questions. Why are we facing an overage? What has the school building committee done to deal with the overage? And what are the next steps? So why are we facing an overage? It's as plain as day. This is the producer price index. This is the gold standard for school construction projects in the country. Our building project was approved-- the budget was established in December of 2021. In May of 2022, five months later, this community supported that project. 85% of the voters came to Town Meeting and supported the project, and then two weeks later, 67% of the voters at the ballot supported this project. So our budget was established here, approved here, and you can see the unprecedented escalation that's occurred since then. So that's why we're facing an overage. So the question becomes, what have we done since the approval? Since approval, the school building committee has had over 20 school building committee meetings. The school building committee and the project team has presented twice to the Select Board. They presented once to the school committee. At every single school committee meeting since May, I've had an MSBA update. The representative to the Finance Committee reported out to the Finance Committee throughout this process. The representative to the Select Board reported to the Select Board throughout this process. And we watched as our four bid packages came in. To date, we are 93% bought out in terms of services and materials, 93%. So we watched the bids come in, and we watched the fluctuation. And we've heard in the community, 6 million over, 8 million over, 4 million over, all these numbers, and we watched it earnestly. Throughout this time, we also worked with our state senator, our representatives. I work with my superintendent association. We work with the School Committee Association, the MMA, MCAG, everyone, to say more money is needed in communities, because there are 30 projects, 30 MSBA projects, impacted by that escalation. So we did everything we can to advocate for more money. Additionally, as a school building committee, we looked internally. Where can we reduce costs on this project? We went through four rounds of value engineering, and we were able to reduce the project by $3.2 million without impacting the educational program and offering for our students. So we made those decisions internally as well. Friday, September 22nd, the last bid on that four-bid package came in, and it was a big one. It was our electrical bid. And it came in at about $7.3 million, or $83,000, under what we had budgeted. So on Friday, September 22nd, we finally knew where we were at 93%. So our project team got together on Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, and then on Wednesday, September 27th, we had a school building committee meeting, and they brought us the information. They looked at guaranteed maximum price. They looked at all our finances. They looked at all our contingencies, and they made a recommendation. And they said, if we dip into contingency, our contingency funds by $393,000, we can deliver the same school that was approved in May of 2022 without adding any additional tax impact to the residents. It was a no-brainer. It was a no-brainer for the committee at that point, because we were fearful where the numbers were going. So the school building committee at that point said, that's what we need to do, because that's the project this community wanted and supported in May of 2022 overwhelmingly. So the school building committee brought that recommendation to the Select Board on Monday, October 2nd. On Monday, October 2nd, we presented the case to the Select Board, and it was approved unanimously by the Select Board to go forward with the project utilizing $393,000 of our contingency money. That still leaves us $3.3 million of contingency money, or just over 5%, which is an appropriate amount, given where we are, based on the expertise of our experts in the room. How no additional tax impact? Well, let's talk about it. Let's look at it. The total project cost-- oh, wrong one, sorry. Total project cost originally in May of 2022, $82.5 million. Currently, $87.1 million. That's the $4.6 million delta that needs to be addressed. So first, our MSBA grant, $28 million? $28 million, no change. The tax impact to the residents, May of 2022, $54.5 million? Currently, $54.5 million, no change. How do we make up the difference? We talked about that legislative advocacy throughout this process, and we are thankful that Senator Kennedy led the process for us and was a catalyst behind getting the legislature to approve more money in the FY24 budget. Additionally, Senator Kennedy, Representative Gary, and all legislators, they also pulled another lever and said, we're going to increase the borrowing capacity for the MSBA. So the MSBA has about $246 million to dish out to the 30 projects that were impacted during that escalation. Now, I'm not worried about that big number. I'm worried about the $4.1 million that was earmarked for Tingsborough. That takes away the bulk of the delta. How else do we get there? Simple. In June of 2023, five months ago, the MSBA approved this project advisory number 83. And essentially, what it says is this, any funding received from third parties can now be added in addition to the MSBA grant. Historically, if you received an energy rebate, that would come off the MSBA reimbursement. Because of the plight of all our communities and schools, they're now letting you put that on top of the MSBA reimbursement. So we project to have about $475,000 in energy savings as well. There's our delta. That's how we make it up. All of that-- again, I'm killing myself with the red thing here-- all of that with no impact to the $54.5, with this community overwhelmingly supported. So when we look at the numbers, originally, this was a $28 million state funding rebate. Now it's $32 million. That makes up for the difference. So there was no additional tax impact to the taxpayers. So you may be asking yourself, why are we here? Part of the mechanism with MSBA is that a community has to authorize borrowing up to the full construction number. It was $82.5 in May. It's now $87.1. Regardless of whether or not we're going to borrow to that level, we have to, as a community, have authorization to borrow up to that level as part of the project funding agreement. So that's why we're coming back, to amend our total construction project number, to get full authorization for the full borrowing. So we have two options. We can vote no. And if we vote no, there'll be a moratorium on the project. We will demobilize what is already there. We will risk being in breach of the original project funding agree with MSBA of $28 million, $7.2 of which we've already received as a community. So at some point, if we don't get back in the MSBA pipeline, we may be on the hook for that $7.2 million. Additionally, that $4.1 million, that one-time $100 million legislative funding, that may not be there or available to us in the future, and that would most likely be dispersed or distributed to one of the other 29 districts that were caught in this unprecedented escalation. That's what would happen potentially with the no vote. What happens with the yes vote? We continue the project on schedule, at no additional tax impact to the residents. So with that, happy to answer any questions. And I do have the project team here, who are far more expert in this than I am, so happy to answer any questions.
Okay, as you expected, probably. First thing, I want to point out, the Annual Town Meeting, the article said we're getting a softball field. So how is it that somewhere along the process, the softball field got eliminated, but now it's back on here? So we can forget that part. I guess there's some rules that allow you to do that. Are we guaranteed a softball field this time?
Yes.
Because last time, it said softball in an article just like this at the Annual Town Meeting. It said softball, new softball field.
Yes, so just at high level, there were a lot of conversations along the way as we were value engineering things in and out of the project and having difficult conversations, and things were looked at potentially being added as an add-alternate or whatnot. We needed to see what the numbers were. And as I go back to that Friday, September 22nd, less than a month ago, that's when we finalized 93% of the construction budget. That's when we knew what we could afford, and the team did a great job of bringing us a recommendation that following Wednesday night to say, we can incorporate the softball field, but we're going to have to dip into contingency by 393,000. So now that and the canopy are included.
I appreciate that, but as citizens at Town Hall, believe it or not, we're in charge of this town, okay? The citizens of Town Hall, we're the governing body. And if you say we're getting a softball field, we should have got a softball field. So this time, we're getting a softball field, right?
We are.
Okay, okay. Make sure we get a softball field this time. Okay, the other, the other thing that's important to bring up, is I know we still have Drake at Water out there hanging at zero to 1.6 million, okay? Now, what happens if they make us pay 1.6? You're going to have to go back and ask us, the town, for more money?
I will defer to the town manager on that question.
We have spent many a day, many a meetings with Town Council. The project budget that is still what's been approved and results in no additional impact includes a fee to connect to the Drake at Water District. The, in our opinion, unlawful system development fee is not a fee that the town will have to pay, in our legal opinion. We have money in the budget to pay to connect. We expected to have to pay to connect. There's an existing connection to the site. We're not putting in a new connection, and so we feel confident in our legal position that we won't have to pay that amount. The reality is, yes, if, if we lose a legal battle, town, the town will have to come up with that money somehow.
So how much money's in the kitty now that we, that we could give them? You said there's a certain amount of money?
Yep.
Was that that 400,000 dollar number?
No, even that's, even that's, I think that we estimated somewhere in the 15,000 range as high. David, if you want to?
Yeah.
That's, that's, that's a big one.
Within, as Colin indicated, within the original budget, a connection fee, a nominal connection fee, would be anywhere from five to 10,000 dollars. So the fee that Drake at Water is charging based on their policy, as Colin indicated, the town feels is unlawful.
It's ursery.
So.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's ridiculous. Okay, thank you. The other question I have for the administration is, I understand we have the number, the final number is the same, except here's the one thing that's not the same, is the interest rate that we predicted back in 2022 of May. What's the, what was the interest rate we thought we were going to get? And what's the interest rate we think we're going to get now?
I don't have that. I will get, get you that. We have been doing short-term borrowings so that we don't borrow that full amount until we know what the project is, is complete. Once we get to the end of the project and we know how much we've actually spent, because we'll be able to reduce what we borrow if we don't spend it all, we would do, we would roll that all into a permanent borrowing. So I can send you what the interest rate has been on our.
And the end of the project is expected to be when?
August 25?
August 25.
August 2025.
August of 2025.
Correct.
But some of this debt's going to keep coming on as we go along here.
The only, the only borrowing that we've done related to this so far was a 7 million dollar one. I can get you the interest rate on that. We're doing a new sale in early November for a 30 million dollar borrowing. We had our credit rating with Staring and Poor earlier this week, so we'll know for certain in the next week what the credit rating is, which will help us give you a better number.
It's certainly fair, we can expect that the interest rate's going to be significantly different than it was in 2022.
Yes, because we knew we weren't going to do a permanent borrowing, though, until August 2025, we factored that assumption, but you're correct, interest rates have changed.
Obviously.
Right.
So that, that's going to be, that's going to be a cost to taxpayers, but that's not their fault, but that's a cost to taxpayer. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Excellent. Just a couple of reminders. Town Meeting is at the elementary school next Tuesday, 7:00 PM. Visit tingsboroughma.gov to view the entire warrant article, explanations, and video explainers. And if anyone has lingering questions after tonight's meeting, email administration@tingsbrowma.gov or call our office at 978-649-2300, extension 100. Thank you everyone for coming.